Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all so much for coming out on this beautiful Thursday evening. So glad to have everyone here tonight. It's an honor and a privilege for us. I am Jordan Boyd, Pastor of Rockwell AM Design Church, and I bring you greetings on behalf of the officers and members here. And we greet you tonight and we welcome you into our home tonight. We are honored to have our guests here today. They're going to introduce themselves. I'll let them do that, but we want to start and open with a word of prayer, and then we'll get started. Is that all right? Everybody feeling good? This is, we're headed into mental health month, in the month of May, and so we've got the Director of Mental Health here tonight, and just want to do a room check. Everybody feeling all right? Want to make sure everybody feeling good. And if you got any problems, raise your hand up before we leave, and we'll work it out. We'll get it worked out somehow, some way. Let's pause for a moment. Lord, we thank you again for the gift of another day and the chance to share in this gift together. We thank you for our leaders who have come tonight to share with us. Thank you for calling them for such a time as this, to the kingdom. We pray that you would give them the strength that they need to carry the load of the needs of so many in our state. Give them rest along the journey. It's a long journey, a long road. Give them rest for the journey. Wisdom, knowledge, protection, and all that they need to fulfill the purpose for which you have called them. All of us who gather here tonight, we ask your blessings upon us. In your son's name, we pray, amen, amen. And the representative from District... 106. The Representative Carla Cunningham in the house tonight.
Thank you, Pastor Boyd. First of all, I want to say thank you for coming out. I know it's a little dreary out. And I'm not going to keep talking because y'all always say that we can talk a lot, and I'm not trying to do a lot of talking. But I'm going to introduce who our guests are, who's going to speak. Kelly Crosby. She has an MSW, LCSW, is the Director of the Division of Mental Health, Development of Disabilities, Substance Use Services. Kelly is a licensed clinical worker who has supported people with mental illness, substance use disorders, and intellectual developmental disabilities her entire adult life. Kelly received her Master's Degree in Social Work Administration for Temple University, and her Bachelor's Science Degree in Psychology from the University of Pittsburgh. She is an appointed member of the North Carolina Institute of Medicine. Kelly? Melanie Bush is a Governor Appointee. Melanie is Deputy Director for the North Carolina Division of Health Benefits, Department of Health and Human Services. In her role, she provides leadership, strategic planning, and overall operations oversight for the North Carolina Medicaid Program, which serves 3 million low-income parents, children, seniors, and people with disabilities who cannot afford healthcare. She holds a Bachelor's of Science Degree from the Wash School of Foreign Service at Georgetown University, and a Master's Degree from Lyndon B. Johnson School of Public Affairs at the University of Texas. Please welcome my guest. Thank you. So the first person that's going to lead off is going to be Kelly.
Okay, there's the button. And I have slides. They may come up. But if they don't, that's okay. And what I, I'm telling you right now, I have far more slides than I can cover in 15 minutes, and I'd much rather hear your questions. But for those of you that like to have something to read at your leisure later, you'll be able to have these. So what I wanted to talk to you today, I'm not going to talk to you about the whole public mental health and substance use and intellectual developmental disability system, not the whole, the whole system. That will take a very long time. But I am going to talk to you specifically about some investments we've been able to make in really critical areas of the public system that need a lot of work, to be honest. And this is where we can thank, one of the many reasons that we can thank Representative Cunningham. So I have to just thank you, Representative Cunningham, because she remains, has been forever and remains such a strong champion of our community. And so we have her to thank for this huge infusion of funds in our system. And this isn't the only thing. Year over year, there's just wonderful things she continues to advocate for on behalf of folks with mental health, substance use, and intellectual developmental disabilities. So I'm just going to hit a couple highlights. And if you go to the next slide, this slide, this really busy slide, is me saying Medicaid is the single biggest, most important thing in our state for people with mental health, substance use, and intellectual developmental disabilities. All these pretty graphs, this is showing people that only used to get a little bit of services because we have a little bit of state money if you don't have insurance, a little bit. But now, almost 50% of the people that got a little bit of services now have Medicaid, and then get a lot of services. And that's remarkable. That's absolutely remarkable. So that's the single biggest thing. So when I, yeah, I like all the funding that comes to us. Do not get me wrong. Please, do not get me wrong. But I know, and I continue to advocate for a really strong Medicaid program because it's a really good benefit and we need it. Okay, next slide. And thank you for moving the slides. So one of the things we were able to do with this extraordinary investment, and did I say how big the investment was? It was literally $835 million, which is stunning, right? Stunning. A good half of it went to this. This is a really wordy slide, but it's great when people have Medicaid, right? It's great. But unless you have providers willing to take Medicaid, doesn't matter if they have Medicaid, right? If you can't find anybody to provide services. So one of the reasons that clinicians, like social workers like myself, or psychiatrists, or substance use counselors might not want to take Medicaid is because it doesn't always pay as good as private insurance. So a good half of that chunk of money actually went to increasing the Medicaid rates. So now they're on par more with other insurers, right? As they should be. And we're going to see how that works, but what we're trying to do is entice more professionals to come and take Medicaid. We're kind of, you know, there is a workforce crisis across the nation, of course, but we actually have a decent amount of schools here in North Carolina that are pumping out mental health professionals. They just don't always want to come work in the public system, right? So this, we hope, will help entice more of them to the public system. So this was one of the, this was half of the investment, which is, which was really crucial. Okay. So on the next slide, our, our funding kind of came in four buckets. Workforce, crisis, justice, and child mental health. Okay, so that's a lot of things to cover in 10 minutes, but I'm going to do my best. This right here is the crisis system, the mental health and substance use crisis system we're trying to have in North Carolina. It has three parts. It has someone to call, someone to respond, and a safe place to go. When you think about medical crisis, that's what we have, right? You call 911, you go, EMT comes to your house, or you go to the emergency room. Well, that's great if you have a heart attack, right? And that's great. Not so great sometimes if you are having a mental health crisis, your child with autism is agitated and nonverbal, your loved one maybe hadn't had their meds for a while, and they're very depressed, or maybe they're really agitated and looking like they're violent, but maybe they're not. They're just really agitated and anxious. So, you know, it's not always the best when an ambulance and a police car and a fire truck show up at your house when you've got an agitated loved one, right? Not always the best thing. So we're trying to make sure that we have a similar, but much different, system in the mental health side of things, okay? So we have 988. Have y'all seen signs for 988? I hope you've seen them. This is, again, where Representative Cunningham is the champion. I don't know if you know that. She's promoting we have 988 in schools, that we have them in parking garages. Me and my team, it's really fun. Like, we, when we go places, we'll take pictures of the signs we've seen, share them with one another. It's exciting. It's encouraging because we want to get the word out. So we have 988 now. It's easy to remember number. It's 24/7. It's anonymous, and you can call 988. So we're trying to make sure everybody knows about 988. That second thing, someone to respond. This is the hardest part of the system, if I'm honest. So we're trying to make sure that when people call 988, if they are in crisis and they need someone to come to their house, we have mobile crisis teams. Some mobile crisis teams went really well, some not so well. So that's an area of the system we're really trying to work on. So mobile crisis can get there in a timely fashion. We also have some places, like right here in Mecklenburg County, where sometimes there's mental health folks that go along with EMTs or go along with law enforcement. And those are really good models for some communities too, right? So we're just trying to make sure that, say, someone calls 911, which is going to happen all the time, right? Even for mental health crises. Let's make sure there's a mental health person there too. So it's treated as a mental health issue, right? But if you call 988, let's get a mobile crisis team out, which is a mental health counselor in their own private car, without all the bells and whistles and sirens, come to your home. So we're working on that. And then we used a great deal of the money on a safe place to go. So more places in our state have urgent cares. So you know of medical urgent cares? You know, we have something called Behavioral Health Urgent Cares. And we also have things called Facility-Based Crisis. These are just terrible names. So we call them Community Crisis Centers. But it's your ED and your little inpatient unit specifically for mental health, or detox, or detox. And the ones that aren't open 24/7, who like close at 5:00 on Friday, we don't get that. We are giving them funding so they're open 24/7, and we're training and equipping them all so they can all take detox and start induction for folks who need to start medications. Okay, so that's what we're building. So on the next slide, all those things I just mentioned, the next slide just breaks down how we have funded these different things. So we've funded more co-response teams, more social workers and clinicians on EMT teams and law enforcement teams, more crisis facilities, more beds. We've created over 100 new crisis beds in the state. Community ones, not psych hospitals. We've also created 12 new of those urgent cares that I mentioned. We are trying to train law enforcement in mental health response across the state. So we've been trying to invigorate that. So this just tells about all the different things that we've spent that money on. And on the next slide, this shows a map of where all the new crisis investment is. I should have showed you a before and after. We've really doubled our capacity in these community crisis spaces. I would love one in every county, but they can be expensive to start up and expensive to fund. So we've used data to try to strategically place them in places where there's like a high volume. So you will obviously see around here that we know we need lots of crisis facilities and programs such as that. All right, next slide. So that's investment one. The other thing we're trying to do, just so you know, is, just like we're trying to advertise 988, we're trying to make sure people know that these crisis, mental health crisis centers exist. So we've actually been doing a lot of marketing, and you'll see more marketing. And we've got helpful tools, like the marketing will lead you to our website, but it'll lead you to a map so you can put your zip code in and it'll tell you where your nearest crisis center is. We're just doing that till people get to know. You'll get to know them eventually. Communities will get to know them eventually, but we're not there yet, right? So we need to advertise them. Okay, next slide. So that's our crisis system. The next area we got investment in was the justice system. These are some statistics that I don't think will surprise you. Over 60% of people who are incarcerated, prison, or jail have mental health or substance use issues. That's extraordinary, isn't it? Folks coming out of carceral settings are 50 times more likely to overdose. I mean, these are like extraordinaries, extraordinary, right? And we know, and I could give you scenario after a scenario, and I bet you could too, I bet you could too, where someone had a mental health emergency, law enforcement came out, an altercation happened, and that individual was arrested. Where a very different outcome could have happened had a mental health counselor come out, de-escalated the situation, got people into services. So we know we really need to focus on that good path happening, right? The good path happening. So on the next slide, you'll see the things that we have funded. Let me tell you what we've funded. We funded that first diversion thing I mentioned, okay? We funded more programs in more counties to set up diversion. So law enforcement is trained, we have good crisis response, and law enforcement have partner, partner-like mental health providers they can refer to, right? So they don't have to arrest people. So this is before they even get sentenced, right? Let's just get them into treatment instead. Let's not arrest them. Let's get them over to treatment. We've invested in treatment when people are incarcerated. So we have partnerships with the prison system. We have partnerships with local county jails to make sure people have mental health therapy, and also medications for opioid use disorders in particular, right? Because of that really high rate of overdose. You don't take someone who's using substances, put them in jail, and then give them nothing. They do and can die. So we need to make sure that they're okay. The last is reentry. Here's the reality, y'all. It'd be great if we could divert everybody, but for lack of a more artful way to say it, but the damage is already done. 60% of people incarcerated already are there already with mental health and substance use issues. So we really need to focus on reentry. So we've invested a lot in reentry, which is helping people with like a case manager, getting them into mental health services or substance use services, getting them some short-term housing, and getting them some employment supports that actually makes sense to them, and hiring peers. We're big on peers, right? Somebody who's walked in your shoes. And so peers in this space are really, really, really critical, right? They know what it's like to come out of a carceral setting with no money in your pocket, maybe no ID, trying to navigate all the checklist of things you've got to do so you can stay back in your community. So invested a lot in that space. On the next slide, these are the places we've invested. We're trying really hard to get a lot of diversion, reentry, and programming carceral settings out there. So that's the map. If you look at the map, you'll see the different programs we have in all the counties. And on the next slide is we have invested in specific mental health teams for people coming out of carceral settings or being diverted. They're called fact teams. I don't have time to explain them. But they're teams with clinicians and social workers and peers. So police can't say, "I don't have anywhere to refer them to." You got a fact team, right? Probation, parole, don't, can't say, "I don't have anywhere to refer them to." Nope, you got a fact team. And you'll see right there in Mecklenburg. There'll be a fact team in Mecklenburg, as well as other of these justice services that I mentioned. Okay, next slide. Workforce. The big takeaway on workforce is we focused our workforce dollars to start with in two big areas. One are peers. I meant, I said what peers are. Peers are people with their own mental health or substance use issues that know what it's like. And I mean that in two ways, right? They know what it's like to have a mental health issue because I don't know about you, but I, it helps me to talk to someone who understands what my experience is like. It just does. The other really cool thing about a peer, though, is they are a person who have learned to navigate their illness and also the treatment system. So it's not just someone you can commiserate with, if you will. There's someone who's known how to navigate getting a therapist, navigate getting substance use treatment, navigate dealing with stigma, or bosses who don't understand things, navigate how they maintain their sobriety or their recovery despite all these obstacles. So we invested a lot in certifying peers. So we certify them and we train them. And now we're working on having employers actually hire them, right? And the cool thing is Medicaid pays. Medicaid. Which is kind of cool. So we're not asking peers to do this for free because they're just good people. It's a job. It's actually a job. So we're paying people to get certified so they can get paid to help people in their recovery. There's some other things on there, but that's the big thing. And then the last thing I'll mention, I'm trying to stay in my time real hard. So if you can go to the next slide, that's more about peer certification. If you're interested in how you can be one. Next slide, next slide. This is just workforce stuff. Next slide, next slide. Okay, this is the last thing. This is the busiest slide in the world. We got $80 million across the whole department. Everyone from DSS, right? Who help, you know, foster homes, children. A division, a division. We work on community services for families and kids so kids can stay at home. And also, when kids get placed out of home, what does that system look like, okay? So on the next slide, it breaks down the investments we've made, every, like up here in DSS. So we just know that we need everything from paid kinship care to foster parents, especially foster parents who are willing to take children with mental health or substance use needs. Those are the kids that never have anywhere to go. They have nowhere to go. So they end up in emergency rooms. And so we're trying to make sure that we have enough foster homes because kids should be in homes. They just should. Hope that doesn't offend anyone. Kids should be in families and they should be in homes. So we need more homes. That second thing is, but those families, let's face it, need support. If your child has mental health issues or you take in a foster child that has mental health issues, you need support. So that is about increasing the number of services and supports we have so kids can stay at home, whether it's their kin, whether it's a foster home. Let's provide enough wraparound support and respite. You'll know what a respite is. Everyone needs a break sometime, let's be honest. So we need enough respite homes so kids and families can get a break from one another. And then, on the next slide, it's kind of the last space. It's the hardest space, and to be honest with you, it's kind of the saddest space. And it's the space that my team focuses on. These are the literally thousands of, I'm not exaggerating, y'all, thousands of children, thousands, who are not in family settings, but they're in group homes or residential facilities. And we hope to have a system in 10 years where no kid is in a group home or facility, right? I don't think that's what we envision how we want kids to be raised, right? Okay. These are kids with the most complex of needs. We are doing a couple of things in that space. One, we've given out funding, and that map shows you where we've given out funding. And this might surprise you, but it matters a lot. If you ever go to some of those facilities, not all of them, they often don't have a lot of money, and they're not often the loveliest places, I know, Representative Cunningham, right? So we actually sent out a couple of million dollars for something we call Environment of Care. And it was literally to paint rooms, buy kids better bed and furniture, make sure they had recreational equipment and spaces because they deserve it. Like, the space shows how much you care about a child and you value them. So we wanted to fix up the places, honest to goodness. The second thing is, it's rolling out next week. All those places we gave money to, we are going to train all of their staff in something called de-escalation. Because what happens sometimes is you got staff, they're untrained, they might be nervous, and that's how bad things happen, right? Kids get restrained, they go into seclusion, there's takedowns. It's what you can imagine it sounds like. And that's not what we want, right? We want staff to feel safe and have good skills, and we want kids to always feel safe, right? So those facilities that got fresh new paint and equipment are going to work with us on. on safety protocols and training for staff. We're working on the facilities themselves, right? Some do a really good job, others maybe need a little help. We just want to make sure that when the kids are there, they get the highest level of clinical services they can. That's going to cost us more money, but it's worth it, right? And finally, we're working to change a couple of the facilities into more specialized treatment facilities. Imagine for a minute the kid who's stuck in an emergency room because they have nowhere to go. You can imagine who that kid is, right? I'll tell you who that kid is. That kid is maybe a kid with autism and mental health issues. How complex is that, right? Here's, here's the most common one. It's a fifteen-year-old kid who has been in the system and out of their home for the last six years, who maybe has been hurt, who's big, fifteen-year-olds are big. And the way they have learned to survive is to be assertive or aggressive or to physically protect themselves. Those kids are stuck in EDs every single day, and no treatment provider will take them, right? But man, they deserve treatment, don't they? They do. These are the best we can give them. So that, those and a couple of other groups of kids that really have a struggle to find placement for, we're building some specialized facilities. But here's the goal, remember, ten years, kids are only in family settings or in homes. Kids who ever go to a treatment facility, it's highly therapeutic, it's lovely, it's warm, family-like, and it's brief. Sometimes kids are in facilities eighteen months, two years, no, 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 no. Three months, intensive, high-quality treatment, and then you go back to the community. That's our vision in ten years, it's going to take a long time to get there. So we're using those investments, we think, for all the right reasons. So that, I think, is my last slide. So my point is, is that, again, thank you for everything that you do. Thank you for this money. And you may not know it, but some of you in the room, I hope, know it. We take very seriously that this was money given to us to serve to the best of our ability. You don't get money like this every day. We've worked very hard with each pot of money to have a community group advising us along the way. And we are always reporting out on how we're using the dollars and what these investments are getting us. Because we have to. This is public dollars and we're using them to improve these really critical areas of the system, and we'll keep working on it. So with that, I'll end, and back to you, Representative.
Thank you, Kelly. I'm gonna bring up something that she didn't mention, and that's the peer support warm line that North Carolina set up. So if you don't call nine eight eight and you still need to have a conversation, you can call the peer warm line and they can kind of help you get to where you want to go. It is anonymous. The other line is the crisis line. That's an additional line that we stood up. So they've done a lot of standing up, but we still have a ways to go. And that eight hundred and thirty-five million dollars was a historic, historic contribution that went into their pot to just deal with ADD, substance use and mental health. And Kelly, I thank y'all, I've looked at everything and I'm keeping my eyes on it, you know, to see how the money is flowing. Thank you. So now we'll go ahead and let Melanie go, thank you.
Good evening. First, I want to thank Pastor Boyd for having us here tonight. I want to thank Representative Cunningham for inviting me to talk about Medicaid. I want to thank Kelly, a former Medicaid alum, now over behavioral health, and thank her for her leadership. We work very closely with Kelly on all things behavioral health. I do want to thank Representative Cunningham, too, for her advocacy for Medicaid expansion. I want to let you know that as of today, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and fourteen people have full health insurance coverage. And it's life-changing coverage for these folks. And to Kelly's point earlier, people are able to get mental health services. We have seen primarily a huge uptick in people getting dental services, because that's not something that you normally have, even when you have health insurance. And then behavioral health prescriptions. People just need their meds. And we've seen a huge uptick in that, in the expansion population. So thank you, Representative Cunningham. It was a long road, but we got there, for now. So I'm here to talk about the Children's and Family Specialty Plan. This is something that we've been working on for a couple of years now. And it's part of our bigger Medicaid transformation. So if we go to the next slide, we have been implementing managed care with private and nonprofit health insurance companies. The General Assembly mandated that we move from just a fee-for-service, go to the doctor, pay the doctor's delivery system to more managed care. The health plans are managing the behavioral health and the physical health of all of our three million Medicaid members. There's still a couple of folks that still aren't in managed care, but it is small. The majority of the folks in Medicaid are served by a standard plan. This is comprehensive, physical and behavioral health, substance use services. It's primarily our families and children, a lot of our folks who are on expansion. We started that on July first of twenty twenty-one in the middle of COVID. And we also launched the first in the nation Indian managed care entity for our friends in Eastern Banff, Cherokee Indians. They are managing the healthcare integrated in their communities in the ways that they see fit for their folks. And it's serving as a model for the entire nation and Indian country. This past summer, we launched our tailored plans. Our tailored plans are our Behavioral Health and Intellectual and Developmental Disability Tailored Plans. These are more specific and enhanced programs that are regional. They are provided through our LME MCOs. We have four now in the state. And Mecklenburg is served by Alliance. And before we had a tailored plan, you had folks getting enhanced behavioral services from the LME MCO, and then you had them getting their physical health services, not from the LME MCO. We've tried to integrate that in a tailored plan, and they have coordinated care across physical and behavioral health, substance use services, intellectual and developmental disability services. Much more enhanced services that are available in our standard plans. This December is the final piece of our managed care puzzle. We're hoping to launch our Children and Family Specialty Plan. And this is the plan that will serve children who are currently involved in the foster care system or formerly involved in the foster care system and their families. On day one, we will be focusing on the children, but the plan is to phase in their families, because we have growing evidence that shows that multi-generational models, you have to heal the family. You can't just heal the child. And so we are wanting to expand the services that are available to the children, wrap the whole thing around the family, and serve them in one single statewide plan. So let's go to the next slide. I'll get into the details of the plan, but I do want to know that we have been very thoughtful and intentional about how we've designed this plan. People have a lot of feelings about the foster care system. They have a lot of opinions about what, where it works and where it doesn't work. So we've had an internal CFSP work group in the department that involves Medicaid, it involves behavioral health, it involves our Division of Child and Family Well-being, it involves our Division of Social Services, to sort of help us do the overall design. And then we've been really intentional about meeting with consumer and family advocates, people with lived experience who are absolutely important to what works and what doesn't work. And we've continued to receive feedback on every iteration of our program design. And then finally, because it is the child welfare system, we're having to work very closely with our Divisions of Social Services at the county level. They're the folks that implement the child welfare program. Right now, they have to manage in two different systems, the LME system and the physical health system. With this CFSP, we can have one plan that they have to deal with, and it's statewide. So that if a child, as you all know, kids in foster care are, move a lot sometimes. We're trying to get the children into placements that they need, and oftentimes, that's not available in the communities in which they live. So there's been a lot of barriers to continued care. There's been a lot of barriers to continuity of care. There's been barriers to actually accessing care, because of the way that we're doing it now. And delays in care, because you have to transfer eligibility between different health plans. So we're going to have one single statewide plan, one health passport, all the health information for that child and the health passport. The child welfare workers will have all this information at their fingertips, so they won't have to be piecing together different health systems. And we have to work very closely with the DSSs to make sure that this, the child welfare side and the health side come together to help these kids. Next slide. All right, so I've, I've basically talked about all of these things. I will say that, you know, it's a statewide plan, it is different from a tailored plan. It has most of the services of a tailored plan, but we're really trying to focus on trauma-informed care. These kids have been through trauma. And we, ideally, all of our Medicaid providers would be providing trauma-informed care. Everybody has their own level of trauma. But these kids are obviously, it's traumatic to leave your home alone. And so we're really focused on that. We're trying to make sure that they have the full range of Medicaid benefits. Anything that they need, we will pay for. So that's exciting. And then we have a care management model that really is going to wrap around them and eventually wrap around their families, so that everyone gets the services and supports they need. Next slide. All right, so these, this talks about the phases that I mentioned. We are going to, as of December first, focus on the children. We're going to, all the children, I think we have about thirty thousand kids statewide in foster care or formerly foster care. We are going to automatically enroll them in the Child and Family Specialty Plan. Then in Phase Two, which will be July first of the following year or later, depending on how the rollout of the children go, we will be expanding it to the families of those children and their caretakers. So first phase, it will be children that are in foster care, children receiving adoption assistance, children who are formerly foster care up to the age of twenty-six, and any minor children of foster children, so that they can be in the same healthcare plan. And then the next phase will be family caretakers, et cetera. I failed to mention that this plan is actually going to be administered by Blue Cross Blue Shield. They are the largest insurance company in the state. They are delivering this program through a product they're calling Healthy Blue Connect Together. And, or Care Together, Connect Together. Now I can't remember. Anyway, it's, it's Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they have statewide presence. And we think that that will help with the mobility of these kids and their families, making sure that people have access to care. Right, next slide. So this sort of just focuses on the way we're doing it now. Until December, we still, all kids that, when they enter the foster care system, they become automatically, well, most kids, become automatically eligible for Medicaid, if they weren't already on Medicaid. And then the local DSSs have to navigate the care and get these kids the care that they need between the LME MCOs and between the physical health services. And so we're trying to, like I said, bring these into one plan, have it focus on adverse childhood experiences, have it be trauma-informed, and reduce the barriers in the access to care. And even, you know, we've been working with Healthy Blue for months and months and months, even building capacity in the providers that we need, because there are gaps in our system. There are gaps in where you can place children. And Healthy Blue knows that it is their responsibility to help us tackle that. So that's what we're going to hopefully be doing. It is going to be bumpy, right? The foster care system has a lot of structural problems. This is not going to be the silver bullet that solves all of the foster care problems, but we hope it is a very strong step forward. We really understand that we're not going to, these are very vulnerable and children, and they're in troubled situations, and we're not going to see immediate recovery. But we're hopeful that this model will help us take a very strong step forward. Next slide. So these are our objectives I've talked on. We want to improve care. We are focused on family preservation where possible, and that's why we are trying to work with the entire family. But at the same time, when that's not possible, we're also very invested in permanency for these kids if they have to be placed outside of their family. And we want them to be placed near people who love them. We want coordinated care. We want to collaborate with our county DSSs. No one's going to get lost, no one's going to fall through the cracks. That is the ideal. And we want to prevent kids from living, like Kelly said, in emergency departments, because no one will take them. Or in some cases, I think in thirty-some counties we have right now, children in local DSS offices. They're spending the night in an office building, because there's nowhere for them to go. And so this is part of the solution, and making sure that that never happens, that kids are in families and they are safe. So on day one, next slide, our goal is to make sure that everyone has an ID card and their, and their caretakers have an ID card, and they know where they can get services. They should have no disruption in the care that they're receiving. They can go see whatever provider they're currently receiving services from. Just because they're in the new plan, we want to continue the care with the trusted providers that they're already seeing. We want to make sure that they can have all the information they have, they have all the medications they need. And so we're doing a lot of transition of care before December to make sure that we have all of that information in our system and that they have all of their transportation lined up. They have all of their medications in the queue. Everything has already got its prior approval. And then finally, we want to make sure that the providers that are actually providing these services, we want to make sure that they get paid, so that they will continue to provide these services for our folks. So that's day one. Next slide. So this is just a quick outline, a timeline of where we are. Right now, we're still in the technical development. We are working to finalize all of our processes, our file transfers, our protocols, the collaboration between local DSSs and Blue Cross Blue Shield. Starting in May, we will begin end-to-end testing. That's sort of making sure that the information is going to all the different places that it needs to go correctly. And then this summer, we're going to start county readiness. We're going to be working with the counties, especially the counties that have a large number of children, like Mecklenburg, working to make sure that they know everything about the program. They know what services are available for them to refer these kids to, and making sure that they have access to all the health information that, that the plan is going to have in one place and one location. And then in October, we're going to start enrolling all of the kids into the health plan. Then they'll start getting handbooks, they're going to start getting ID cards, they're going to start familiarizing themselves with the transition. We're going to start scheduling, we're doing that transition of care, scheduling their doctor's appointments, scheduling their transportation. All of this is going to happen in October. There are thirty-three thousand kids, and we are doing warm handoffs from the current LMEs to Blue Cross, to make sure that nobody gets dropped and that every single person has a seamless transition. And so we'll start that in, in October, and then also assign folks to their PCP, whoever they're seeing for primary care, they're going to be able to keep that person, and that will happen. And then finally, the transition of care will continue through October and November, and then on December first, we will go live. We've done these transformation go-lives now three times. We always try to say, it will be bumpy. There will be problems that we have not anticipated, but I feel like we've gotten pretty good at doing it. What is more complicated about this model is that it is really dependent on our county DSSs. And we have to work in a seamless manner, whereas before, we, we didn't do that so well. And so this slide here, and I think this is my last slide as well, just shows the roles and responsibilities of everyone. So the county DSS child welfare folks, they're responsible for coming up with a care plan for these kids. They're going to be the ones that help determine what assessments these They're going to be the ones that help determine what assessments these children need, and from those assessments, helping to coordinate the care with Healthy Blue to get them into the appointments that they need. The county Medicaid eligibility team will get the kids enrolled, and they'll need to know the same thing about what services are available. The DSS, they're going to have the oversight of the child welfare system, and they're going to work closely with the county DSSs to make sure that they are following the correct protocol for these kids. And then finally, Medicaid, of course, we're responsible for implementing the health plan, making sure that the health services are delivered, paying the providers, and making sure that, from an oversight standpoint, that everything is working correctly. It does say in very small print, and I am realizing that I need new glasses because I cannot read that over there, and I probably should turn around. We do work very closely with the Division of Child and Family Well-being and with DMH and Kelly's team. They help us, they're really the policy people, they're the ideas people, they help us tweak where we need to tweak the approaches that we're taking. And so they're also a big part of this sort of triangle. So that's the Child and Family Specialty Plan. Happy to answer any questions about that or Medicaid in general. There's a lot going on in the Medicaid world. So thank you all, I appreciate it.
So, thank you. So thank you, Melanie. Now we will take questions from the audience for Melanie and Kelly, if anyone has them. Oh, wait a minute. Who, who wants to be first? I think this, yeah. Somebody's going to have to help with that. I think that young man, he was standing up first, okay?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, is this program, I thought this program was here years ago to help people in, in this facility like this, because like, when I try to call to get help for people, you know, because I, I like to reach out to help people, because sometimes we don't want to share certain things with certain people, you know? And so what I'm saying is, I reached out to try to get someone help, and you know what I get is, they don't want to give me the runaround, they tell me this and that, just like when I called a city to get stuff, I can't get no answer, don't nobody want to help nobody, and stuff like that. And then at the end of the day, when something happened, if they would have reached out and tried to give the rights things, the person could have been still him, maybe, if it was in God's plan. But what I'm saying is, if we could step up sometime and be honest with us and tell us, that say, "Well, look, we could direct you to the right person." But every time we call, it say, "Well, if you don't own, if that ain't your child," stuff like that, "They tell you, we can't tell you, can't give you any information," or nothing like that. But I say, "These people are crying out." And why do you think so many people are suicidal? Because they need, they reaching out, they need help. They need somebody to help them. And I'm just so thankful and grateful that I'm one person that reach out to God, regardless of what's going on in the world, the storms or whatever. I pray and ask God to give me strength, because we don't know what tomorrow is going to bring.
First of all, and let me chime in, your state legislator or your senator should be a resource for you to touch those resources. Now, I do Health and Human Services. Everybody don't do Health and Human Services. And I, and I'm going to tell you, Health and Human Services is the hardest lift, and a lot of people think some other things are more sexy to do. But Health and Human Services is the hardest lift across this whole state, and, and I applaud them for what they do every day, because I can imagine the drain, because the drain I feel a lot of times. But, your legislator, if I'm your legislator, you get my information before you leave, I'm a resource. Your LME in this city, in this whole county, is Alliance, and they provide all mental health services and substance use services and ADD services. They all follow up under there, they receive Medicaid. Sometimes you got to touch the resource that can touch the other resource to get you connected, because personally, I am a parent of ADD mental health child. And I went through that system, that's why I'm very involved in what happens now. It's, it's a difficult system to navigate. But if you can touch that resource, they can get you to the right people you need to get to. And a lot of times, that's your senator or your state legislator. That's not, that's not a county, and it's not a city. You need to go to your legislators. Thank you.
Could I add something super quick? I think, like, I'm very, thank you for sharing that, and I'm sorry to hear it, and I hear it too often. Let me be honest. And so, one of the things I didn't talk about is, we know that access in general is a big issue, right? And sometimes it has nothing to do with there's not a resource. It just has to do with our system is too dang confusing. So we've actually been working on two things, the too dang confusing part, but also what happens when you reach the place we told you to go to. So if I'm saying, "Go to 988 and they will help you find a provider," I need to ensure that 988 is actually doing a good job. So we're working on that really hard right now. So when you call 988, they have all the resources, they're well-trained, and they get you to where you need to go. All those crisis centers that I mentioned, whether it's a crisis team, a crisis facility, we hear good stories, people walking in, getting fantastic service. We hear other stories, of people calling and saying, "Oh, no, can't take you, we're full," and then no referral anywhere else, or, "No, you called the wrong place," or, "No, we can't help you because you didn't sign a permission slip for your cousin." So that is something that we hear, and we're working on the quality. I keep saying, people need a very easy door. We're trying to make the door the easiest it can be, so you know one door to go in, but we got to make sure that the door is doing a really, really, really good job. So know that we hear that. It shouldn't just be that hard. It shouldn't be that hard, it shouldn't be that confusing, and you should find really helpful, knowledgeable people when you open that one door we're driving you to. So we're working on that.
Y'all want to talk about NCCares?
Yeah, so, we also have established over the last couple of years, a statewide network called NCCares 360 that does referrals, not only for, to different provider groups, but for things that are probably more immediate, like food, like transportation, like housing, like services to prevent interpersonal violence, toxic stress. And so we have a statewide network, NCCare 360 does provide those referrals. We have pilot programs in the Medicaid program, unfortunately not here in Mecklenburg yet, that pays for these services for folks. And so you still can access it, even if you're not part of our pilot, because they do have a statewide network of where you can go to get food and housing and transportation, et cetera. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that as well, statewide.
First, I'd like to applaud Representative Cunningham. I really do. I, I think I remember when that announcement was made about your helping to get the money. You took a lot of flak, if I can recall, for Ethan crossing the eye. You know, we, we're horrible about my corner and my corner, but you put yourself out there to help. And we know what the administration, current federal administration, it's going to be a hard row. So I just want to applaud you and thank you for what you're doing to help these folks do what they do. That's one. But in terms of the group homes, I was sitting here listening to you, one of the things that we have to address for conservative persons, I'm a Democrat conservative. You think I'm a Republican, but I'm a Democrat conservative. What I mean by that is, I'd like to give and like to help, because there's a lot of people who don't. So we have to find ways to make our own money to be sustainable. So those private group homes, you know, there's somebody named Elon Musk, who may have a, on the, be on the spectrum, is a genius. You may have some geniuses in those group homes. And they can develop businesses, they can farm, they can do other kinds of things within the group home to make money and bring it in and show people that they're not just having their hands out, but they're offering to be good citizens as well. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. I'm Tanya Rive, I'm working media. So I'll make it quick, but I, I have a couple of points. Most of the marketing that's done is through the Department of Health and Human Services to our community. I'd love to have some input on doing that more on a grassroots level with the funding that you have. That's the one point. The other point is around the growth. I heard you talk about the age range, and my nonprofit has worked with several 18-year-olds. You talked about the average of 15. A lot of 18-year-olds, especially with the explosion of psychosis, young people, that's 18 years or 20, I didn't hear a whole lot about that. And again, personally, I've dealt with youth in this area, and they haven't been able to get any assistance. And at least one is sitting in jail right now. And I worked with this youth from the time he was in high school up until this point. Now, what's very frustrating is, I've had a good report with his attorney, but the family, that's your issue. As a community, I work with my platform to normalize the conversation around mental health. That's what I always say on my radio show. But our community, not just from the foster system, we need to be more acceptable and more programs that normalize this conversation. But to my point, this young man, once I forced their attorney to do, to have him declared incompetent, which they did, his family was not able to use that because, under HIPAA, because he was declared incompetent, he could not sign any paperwork to release this report. So, basically, they have nothing that they can do. And he still sits in jail. These are the situations that I'm sure is not an anomaly that is happening in our community that we need help with. Thanks.
Can I say two super quick things? I think your point about, it's great that we advertise stuff, and I, I do think it's great, but I completely agree with you that there are better messengers than us, and better ways to tell the story, and I do think that is in community. We didn't cover it tonight, but we actually spent a decent amount of the funding we get, the federal funding, which we hope keeps coming, to infuse to local communities for programs, mental health and substance use programs that make sense in community. So, Pastor Boyd, I'm sure you know about the phenomenal program that he has here, because that's what makes sense. You, you don't need to hear about my, whether you care about my program. You need a program that makes sense to your community in a safe place that you trust. And that's what we want to fund, period, end of story. I agree, the message needs to come from the community too, in ways that make sense to the community. The other thing about the first episode psychosis, again, not part of this funding, but one of the best-kept secrets we have in North Carolina, and it is a secret, it's a shame, it's a secret, is something called our first episode psychosis programs. Believe it or not, that's actually what they're called. Every year we devote money to these programs, nobody knows about them. So we've actually been quite horrified. I've been visiting them all, and the people that run the programs, because they are awesome, and they're literally for the group that you're talking about. We fund them every year for that reason. Nobody knows about them, so you will be hearing a lot more about them, and we need to grow. 200,000 people a year have their first psychotic episode, and you're quite right, there's 17-year-olds, 18-year-olds, 19-year-olds. And the difference between getting in a program like that and having someone help you understand your illness, helping your family understand your illness, giving your family counseling, because that's a major life change, and that's really hard. These programs provide these things. Those kids are having really good life outcomes. And that's really different than somebody who doesn't get that program and ends up in jail, or ends up labeled with disability and put in a group home for the rest of their lives. These kids get a chance, their families get a chance, they get the wraparound services they need. We have them, we fund them, nobody knows about them. And that's on us, right? That is absolutely on us. So that is one of the things we're trying to promote more of this year, a lot.
Hi. I have a 42-year-old son who has Down Syndrome. He doesn't have mental health issues, thank God, but there are other issues that are falling through the gaps concerning him. He lives with me in his home, and so, he doesn't have the resources of a mental health facility or professional to advocate for him, tell us about goods and services and so forth like that. So when you talk about including people with ADD and mental health issues, you need to include children who are in residences, in private residences as well. Since the tailored plan has rolled out, we have not received anything in the mail about the tailored plan. Because I was involved with CFAC, and because I had some connections, I knew about it. But as far as him getting things in the mail, as far as him getting things about services, none of that stuff is coming. His Medicaid card is approximately 10 years old. Luckily, he doesn't need it, because he has doctors and everything's established, but if he did need it, it's expired. I've tried to call Medicaid, and I get automation, I get the runaround, I leave messages, I don't get return calls. And because I'm a parent, thank God I'm a retired parent, but if I was a parent at a job, I wouldn't have time to be on the phone dealing with automation and asking people to call me back, and they don't do that. So there are a lot of things that are gaps in services that are involved around the tailored plan. And we were talked into dealing with the tailored plan, and now that we're in the tailored plan, we're told that we can't get out of the tailored plan, and we don't have any directory towards the doctors for the tailored plan, the services that involve the tailored plan, who's, who's providing these services. I mean, we're lost, and we're not in an agency, I mean, not in a building with all of this staff and everything that's going on. So how do we, as private families of children with disabilities, get this information?
First, let me say, I am sorry that this has been very frustrating for you. It is not supposed to work that way. That is not the way that we want it to work for anyone. So, thank you for, for sharing that. In addition to coming to me and after this, and me getting your information so I can make sure that we take care of you, there are a couple of different ways that you can contact, well, you can contact the tailored plan directly, I understand the automation. But we also have a way to escalate things internally within Medicaid through our member ombudsman. When you have problems, you can call a 1-800 number, they have live people pick up. It's called Medicaid Ombudsman. If you Google it, it should pop up. They immediately escalate it to Medicaid and to the health plans. I don't understand why you would not have a handbook. I don't understand why you wouldn't have a card. I don't understand, that is not the way this is supposed to work. But I will tell you that his Medicaid card will not expire if he is still enrolled in the Medicaid program. All the providers have to do is log into our system, and they will see that he's still enrolled. So don't let that be a barrier to ever making an appointment. You can tell them that they can look it up in the system, because they know how to do that, and they will see that he still has Medicaid. But I appreciate your point too, about the fact that, you know, we have, well, we've worked very closely with CFAC, and, and we have been trying to reach out to, to families that do have children in homes and not just necessarily in facilities. But I encourage your continued participation. We rely on them heavily for feedback to point out what is working and what is not. So I would just say again, on behalf of North Carolina Medicaid, I am sorry, because this is not how it's supposed to work at all.
I appreciate it. It would be, it would be different if he had episodes and different things like that that would call attention to him, but because he doesn't, he falls through the cracks and he doesn't get any services.
And we talked all about mental health and substance use tonight. We could, anytime you all want us to come back, or Representative Cunningham wants to come back to talk about intellectual and developmental disabilities, and what we're trying to do in that space, we would be glad to come back. But there is much that we're trying to do, because what you described is, we have, we are working really, really, really hard to get more people in services as much as we can, because more people just need services. And that's a short way of saying ability- can, because more people just need services. And that's a short way of saying a really big, long thing. But there's something else, and I would love Reverend Boyd to talk with you about this, but we just published jointly with Medicaid a whole bunch of materials, I don't know if you know this, that describe the services that are available to you if you have intellectual and developmental disabilities and how to get them. It's this whole bunch of information in like easy-to-understand language, because the community told us they don't understand all the nonsense that we send out. And we are printing it and sending it to whoever wants, doctors' offices, DSSs, churches, because it's utterly terrible when we meet families, especially families who've got kids with Down syndrome or autism, and they've been struggling on their own for 10 years, and they didn't even know there were services. We're not good at getting the word out sometimes. So this is one of the things we're trying to do to get the word out. We're doing other things, too. We need workforce. We're trying to build more workforce. We actually have workers out there, because we're trying to get people into services. But we're trying to ascertain housing needs to make sure we have housing, because you didn't say it, but your son is getting older, right? And you're probably wondering, long-term, where's he gonna live and who's gonna take care of him? I care about that, too. Like, I've got loved ones, and I have that worry, too. We need to make sure that there's enough housing, and housing for people with ADD is the age. So yeah, so there's a lot we could talk about in that space, and I'm sorry you feel like you fall through the cracks.
Thank you, thank you. We're gonna take our final question from Representative, I thought I was gonna call him a representative. Pastor Shipman is going to be the last question, because we're almost out of time. Excuse me. It was another lady. I had, I had somebody else that was in front of her. So Reverend Shipman, if you're not gonna take it now, your opportunity is leaving.
I'm gonna take my opportunity. Thank you so much. I was trying to be kind, but that's, it's, I have a couple of questions, just one question and then a statement. The budget and all of the programs that you all have presented, are those funds in danger because of the things that we're seeing taking place? These are funds that are in hand?
Well, first of all, the reason we were able to draw down the $835 million was because we expanded Medicaid, and we drew down $1.6 billion from the federal. So that's one-time money. Now, we will never get that again. I don't see that happening. But not what we have established up under that money that's spent, it's not in jeopardy. Any new money coming will probably be in jeopardy.
The suicide prevention component that you mentioned, what are the ages of the young people that you'll be working with?
So I have slides. I think we got them to share late, but we'll make sure you get them. We actually have, and we're gonna be advertising it if you on our list serve. We actually got a grant, and we've been working with 17 communities across the state, including Mecklenburg is one of the communities. It's a specific suicide prevention work with communities specifically around black youth suicides, specifically black male youth suicide. We have a big suicide action plan, but we have a specific plan because the escalation has been extraordinary. So there is a big old work plan. There's community groups. There's one here in Mecklenburg that's working on local solutions. And we're happy to get that information out to you so you know about it.
Okay, thank you. Point of pastoral privilege, I want to, amen. I want to reiterate what Judge Charlotte Brown said a few minutes ago. And we, she said that we need to applaud the efforts of Carla Cunningham, not only, wait a minute, not only because of her being out front, taking all of the hits, especially when she was fighting for these funds. And I think this group needs to make sure that we let her know how much we appreciate her being an advocate. And I think we need to give her a standing ovation. I think that's only, only appropriate.
Thank you, Michelle, and thank you, Pastor Shipman. So that's gonna conclude Melanie and Kelly's portion, and I'm gonna let them go, because some of the things that I'm gonna say after they leave, they don't need to hear. Is that good? And thank y'all. And, and look, I rely on them more than y'all know. When I call them, they don't delay in answering my phone calls. Somebody gonna call me soon and quick. So thank you. Safe travels, and thank y'all so much for coming. So we're gonna kinda just like have a little conversation, and then I'm gonna stop talking. One of the first things I want to talk about that we are seeing right now, and I hope that everybody saw the article, and if they didn't, they need to go back and find it, and that's that there's a 200% increase in African-American community of overdoses. It's 200%. In the Caucasian community, it's only 14%. These children are 16, 17, 18 on up. What we do know is that treatment is out there, but there's a stigma in our community about getting treatment. So it's important that we talk about it with our youth before they have that first experience with whatever they're using. And it could be poisoning from a painkiller pill that is laced with fentanyl, that they do not even know that it's laced with fentanyl. We gotta get that 200% down in our communities. It is so significant. The other thing I want to talk about is suicide, and I'm not gonna talk about anything long, because the hard conversation is coming after I talk about these few things, is the peak in African-American males dying by suicide. It's been a significant peak in the last three years. For what we've seen since COVID happened, and they do this youth behavioral assessment inside of schools to look at teenagers, to look at the students, to see what they're experiencing. And I know probably it's a surveillance, and probably none of y'all never heard of it, but they do it annually to look and see what kind of problems the children are having, if it's anxiety, if it's depression, if they're suicidal. And then they do a comprehensive, and then they send the information back to us at the state, and we look at it and say, this is what's actually taking place with the children and the students in the school. We know there's a peak in depression, anxiety, and suicide. And that happened after COVID. It peaked in 2022. But the children are still impacted, and it's not enough being done in the community to reach a lot of them. So our work is cut out. And if we don't, then that's a generation loss. So we have to reduce the stigma on the suicide, but doubly, we gotta reduce the stigma on getting help for our addiction. Because they don't know that it's something in it when they take it. They may be addicted to something else, but they trying this, and the next thing you know, they've died. So I'm gonna go over a few things that I spent time on, so y'all know what I did last session. And then I'll talk about what I'm gonna do this section, this session, this cycle, because it's every two years. So yes, I was Medicaid expansion. 12 years I worked to get Medicaid expansion. And I'm gonna be frank and be honest with y'all. When the budget came out, we signed a bill at the governor's mansion, but that wasn't the final bill. When we stood up there and took them pretty pictures that everybody saw all across the state, that wasn't the final take on it. The final take took place inside of the budget. And yes, I'm not in charge. And yes, I'm a Democrat. And they Republicans, and they in charge. Okay? So when the bill came, I was the only female Democrat to sign that budget for Medicaid expansion, because the heat was on. And yeah, I did have somebody come after me, and that's okay. God got me. Okay? But 600,000 people have Medicaid today. Now, you say, why is she so worried about 600,000 people? Well, some of them 600,000 people, my family. Some of them 600,000 people, my friends, now have Medicaid coverage that is saving their lives. People had heart disease. People had all kinds of things going on. We were losing lives because we wasn't providing healthcare to those that could not afford it. The second thing I did, and I talked about the $835 million, that was major. Yeah, I was the only Democrat on that bill. But that $835 million had never been done in the history of the state of North Carolina. Never. Locally, I'm gonna share this, because y'all need to know this. Overdoses and suicides in our jails have been the highest in the last four years than it's ever been. Overdoses and suicides, why? Well, some kind of way is getting in there. In some kind of way, while they're in there and they're not getting their treatment. In the state of North Carolina, for 100 counties, we only had three inspectors that went into every prison in the state of North Carolina. I said, not no more. I was able to get two additional jail inspectors in the state of North Carolina that would go inside of our jails and inspect, to make sure that they're in compliance with the health regulations established by the state. Now, I'm gonna tell you something about those people inside of those jails, and you wouldn't believe it. Those people inside of the jail that are dying, most of them are less than 35 years old. They're less than 35 years old, and they ain't never been to trial, but they dying in the jail. So that's why I wanted the two additional jail inspectors. School lunch debt wiped out across the entire state, $9 million. I was able to get $6 million for the first cycle and $3 million in recurrent. That means every cycle, we get a $3 million wipeout for school lunch debt. Now, I'm gonna get some people to stand up in here, because, because that was just some of the stuff that I was able to do. But I was also able to bring home $2.5 million in nonprofits. Hope Haven in the house. Hope Haven in the house. Hope Haven. Lifespan, where's Lifespan? Lifespan in the house. Where's Astrid? Astrid, the YMCA Keith. Keith in the house. Metroline Food Bank, Habitat for Humanity, Gracious Hands Transitional Housing, who helped transition women who've lost their homes into permanent home ownership, ownership. She not here. She had to be at the airport at 7:45. She might have been in here, but I don't know. But anyway, and then I keep, the relatives, do anybody know what the relatives do? The relatives was one of them. They help troubled children that are out of their homes. I was able to help them as well. The fire department up in Huntersville, because Huntersville is a part of my district, and Hope House, which also is like a transitional placement for people that lose their homes. So all of that, that's what I've done. Now I'm gonna tell you what I'm getting ready to work on. And what I'm getting ready to work on. And I'm telling you, this right here is hard. And I'm just gonna tell the little story Pastor Boyd. So a couple of years ago, I got a call from a man down in Wilmington, and his son had got a hold to the Delta A, and he took too many. And he ended up going to the psychiatric hospital, and he was involuntarily committed. So the first legislation I filed this time was to ban Delta A, Delta N, and all hemp derivatives from public schools, grounds, activities, and everything. Now, I did an interview the other week on it. Today, as I was walking out the door, I got a call. And now, you don't never know people who know people. Now, when I was helping this guy, he said, you know Pastor Boyd? And I said, yes, sir, I do. He said, he is a very good friend of mine. Now, this is after all this conversation, right? And of course, confidentiality, I couldn't even talk to Pastor Boyd about it after the man had told me. But today, as I was getting ready to come over here, I got a phone call. And it was from the spectrum man that did the interview with me. And I had spoken to the man down in the other county to get permission to share his information with the spectrum people. And he was so grateful. He said, yes, Representative Cunningham, you can share it. I'll talk to him and everything. Well, the man called today, and I tell you, I don't know. He called to tell me that the son died today. So I was shook up, you know, before I left the house. But it's just so stunning, you know, the kids are out here, and the children are out here, and some of them are adults, you know, adults are doing things, too. It's not just the children. And they're ending up getting a hold to the wrong things. But that was the first piece of legislation I put in, because I never forgot about that man calling me. And he had an issue about the involuntary commitment with the hospital, and then I had to connect him to the hospital so that the hospital could explain everything and get everything situated. That's why I'm saying, your legislator is supposed to be a resource for you. DHHS, when I call, they gonna pick up the phone, because they know I'm gonna follow up on it. Even after I helped that man, I called that man back to say, now, did everything get resolved? Yes, it did. Because guess what? They know I'm gonna call back again. And that's, sometimes that's not good for me to keep calling back. I've had prisoners transferred, I have, to get them closer to home. I've done that as well. And people called me out of Alabama. The lady called me out of Alabama. Her nephew was, had a bad car accident, and he lived in North Carolina, and his parents had gotten killed. And she called out of Alabama. I'm, ma'am, who told you to call me? She said, my friend in the AARP in North Carolina. I said, I said, I said, okay, ma'am, okay. So anyway, I helped with the placement of her, making sure they didn't put the nephew out of the hospital before he got properly placed. The next thing I'm working on is disabled veterans' tax, relief the bill. North Carolina has a lot of veterans in our state, and some of the states that surround us don't, don't make them pay that property tax on that, on the primary residence. South Carolina is one of them, and that's why we lose a lot of our veterans. And we want our veterans to come home. We want them to come back to North Carolina. I'm working on advocacy for the Long Term Care Residence Act. And those are those facilities that people, seniors, and people that can't take care of themselves end up going to, long-term care facilities, adult care facilities. We need more ombudsmen. Do y'all know what the ombudsman is? Everybody know what the ombudsman is? So when you go in a nursing home facility or adult care facility, it's a sign hanging on the wall. It's required by the state and federal if they receive Medicare. And that number is, if you see something wrong, you anonymous, pick that phone up, and you can call there and tell them what you see and make your complaint. That complaint is then filed with the state for those facilities. Sometimes it will trigger an immediate, if it's a harm or injury, immediate surveillance has to be done at that facility. If that facility is not in compliance at that time, they coming back, and they're gonna give you a correction action to do. And if that correction action is not done within an appropriate time, they're gonna find them. If they got fraud going on, especially with Medicare, they'll shut them down. So those are the, that's what the ombudsman is. So we need some more of those. The other thing I'm working on The other thing I'm working on is the North Carolina Student Lifeline Act. And that's for suicide. What this would do, it would take and put on the children's ID or student's ID, the 988 number, the crisis line number, and the peer warm line. They would have it with them all the time. It require that any education facility that gives a computer out, it has to be on that computer. This has already been done in several other states. So, I'm trying to get it done here. That bill is gonna be heard this coming Tuesday in education. Three of my bills have already passed on the state floor and they are moving to the senate. Okay. The last bill that I'm really working on, and it probably, some of y'all may relate to it, but it's removing squatters from people's properties. From private property. You don't want people moving in, taking your property. You know, so that bill is there. It's two of those that are present, I don't know if mine is gonna move or not, but I know one gonna move. So it doesn't matter whether it's mine or not, I know one's gonna move. And then I did the bill to look at the senior property taxes as well. That's another one. Because we increased the thing up to $30,000, but it definitely needs to be significantly more for the environment that we're having to live and working in, in that capacity. Now, I'm gonna stop talking. And I'm gonna let y'all, if anybody got some questions, anything you wanna know, don't be scared. Somebody gonna have to help run that microphone. Oh, and the hard thing, I'm probably gonna have to tell y'all is this. And it's kinda hard. But, you don't get anything done in Raleigh by just talking to the same people. And I've said it. If you go into Raleigh to represent your people, your constituents, you're not in Raleigh to represent a party. Okay? Once you become elected, you become your constituents representative. Okay? So, that includes everybody. Whether they voted for me or not, they still have a right to dial my number and ask for services. And I try to tell people, Senator Tillis is your senator. And if you need veteran services, that's where you better call. Because he has a whole team, and that's all they do, is veteran services. Now, I do health and human services, I do a lot of veteran services. But if you call me about a health and human services to my office or send an email, you gonna get a call back because that's what I do. I don't do a whole lot of other stuff. That's my specialty because my background is in nursing. Okay, I'll take that question. Pam, please.
So, how you get involved? Because, I know, I mean, in my family, there's a lot of everything you talked about. And so, but you don't know how to get involved, you don't know how to help because usually when you go ask, they put you off.
Well, one of the things, and I guess I just kinda had to learn it. When you have a passion that's burning on whatever that passion is on, you don't stop. You gonna find a way, and you know what happens because that's probably what happened with me, is the universe just opens up. And then it just give you what you need. But grassroots is from passion because that's where the Charlotte Healthcare Coalition started from. Pam was part of the Charlotte Healthcare Coalition. And Dr. Robbie and several other people were loyal. Yeah, we had this grassroots organization that started because of the ACA and then went on to the Medicaid. And then they made me go to Raleigh. And then they sent a couple of other people somewhere, but I don't know where they at now. But they kinda held my feet to the ground too. Those people kinda said, "Oh, we know what you went there for, now don't you forget." You know, and that was kinda what kept me grounded and on point. That, yeah, this was the course I'm supposed to be on. So, you gotta do that, Pam.
Hello.
Hi.
My question is in reference to the 30% reduction in senior property taxes? Is that currently in place?
It's $30,000.
Oh, $30,000.
We only had before, because we looked at what the city had done and we increased it in the last cycle, I believe it was. And I thought it went from 20, 25 or 30,000. I can't remember. But we did do something in that space, but it's not enough. We need to do some more.
What is the process?
So, we don't actually have the process. What we do is put it in statute and then it falls back to the city. That's what happens.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes?
Hi, my name is Deborah. And I want to applaud you, Representative Cunningham, for all that you've done. Your work in supporting nurses has been vital to me because I am a nurse. But one of the things I wanted to say, we've been noticing a lot of trends with vaping. Anything coming down the pipe to help with vaping? Because they don't know what's in these things that these kids are taking. And with the Medicaid that has been given, it has helped to decrease some of the urgency in the emergency rooms because people can establish care with their doctors. And if that is going to be in jeopardy, how do we see helping those people?
Thank you, Ms. Deborah. So, the vaping is included in the hemp derivative because of the tobacco law is, the tobacco statute law is already in place. You're not supposed to have that on school campuses. So what we did is kinda updated the vocabulary and included hemp derivatives and vape. So you're not supposed to be vaping on school property at no events and all that. In the last, in the last year in Mecklenburg County, we had over 700 students that vaped in these schools. And they had problems because they're not supposed to be doing it. But they were going in the bathroom, cutting holes in the walls, they locking down the bathrooms, and then they getting suspended. They was putting them down in the toilet. So we know that they're doing it, but to have to be suspended because you vaping, it needs to be another alternative. So the schools would have to put up signs, they would have to make the children aware. "You can't vape here." "There's no tobacco, no vaping, no CBD, the Delta 8 and Delta 9." Now, let me talk about Delta 8 a little bit. Because Delta 8 is not approved by the FDA because we don't even know what's in Delta 8. And what they're using it for is different things. It doesn't get you high like the Delta 9 do. It may relieve some anxiety and help you rest. But they don't know all the side effects of it yet. Now, it's a new term out connected to vaping. And that term is popcorn lung. And I don't know how many people have heard of popcorn lung. But popcorn lung is related to people that worked in the factories that fix microwave popcorn. And because they worked in the factory, it's a product in it called dicotil. I wanna say that's how it is. That causes their lungs, the smallest air sacs in their lungs, to stop functioning. And so that's what we're seeing happening with the kids that are doing long-term vaping now. And guess what? There's no treatment for it, and there's no recovery. So that's why the vaping is very important that we get a handle on it because they can't be fixed once the damage is done. Yes, sir?
Representative, please forgive my naivete. But I've heard you're mentioning a number of items. My question is, if vaping, Delta 8, and those things are as hazardous as I've heard, why are they so easily over the counter available? And what does the law say about the legality of my going to the corner store and being able to get these items?
Thank you, thank you, sir, for the question. So currently, we don't have statute in place. So that's why it was important for me to put some out there so we can go ahead and get some. Because over the age of 18, I think South Carolina goes to 21, but we're looking at 18. For North Carolina, you're not supposed to be able to go in and purchase it. But we have heard that kids have been able to go in and purchase it. So that's why I put forth the two bills. One's on vaping and the other one is on the hemp derivatives, which includes the Delta 8 and Delta 9. It'll put a limit on the age that they can purchase. Also, it also would limit where they, in the schools, they not supposed to have it. But I believe it's gonna be another piece of statute that's gonna come along that's gonna look at the distance that those facilities, shops, would have to be from the school, the school place or wherever it is. I don't know who's gonna move it, but that is something very needed. Because they sort of flooded in the community, it's a lot of them, every turn you make is one. And so that's, it's just so accessible. So I think some statute's gonna be coming along for that. But mine's sort of focused on the schools and looked at the age. So it's no, no young people should be going inside of those shops buying it. And then I noticed some places you can go in and they just take so many of them and put them in a thing. And then, you know, instead, it's not like in a container. You know, they sort of packaging it themselves, you know what I'm saying? And you don't know what you're getting. So that's two things against it. Thank you.
Representative Cunningham, thank you so much for what you do for us here in the state of North Carolina and your region. I have a question. You mentioned that these derivatives impact people and impact the small sacs in their lungs. What about people like myself that may have asthma and other allergens that go around? And I'm getting exposed. I know there are a lot of buildings that don't allow smoking, but there are areas in the parking lot where they can go. And when I go by sometimes, it hits my face and I have to wear a mask.
You talking about at the school? You talking about in the regular public area? So, in a public-private area? So, now I know in all public buildings in Raleigh, you can't smoke. You can't do it anywhere on our property. And you're not supposed to be doing it in certain properties here locally. So I don't know how much limitation we would have on private places. I know even for the schools that I put in that were private facilities, I could not mandate them because they don't receive any state dollars. I could encourage them, but I can't mandate them. And so that was put in as well. So that's a whole nother ballgame, I'm dealing with the private property.
Has anybody done a study on people, non-smokers, that are impacted by this? Will it impact my lungs? Is what I'm asking anyone else. Is that coming out?
I'm not sure yet because I do know, I've been watching the research and looking at what studies are being done. And it's still kinda early for them to have that data collected and to show us what the impacts are. We just know that with the children, the popcorn lung is starting to show up. But we also know that we're seeing psychosis with some of the children that are, you know, consuming the Delta 8.
Good evening, my name is Pam, and I thank you for coming out and having this forum. I am a disabled vet, and I have a question regarding, you said, the property taxes. I moved here in 2017 from a state where I didn't have to pay any property tax. And it was, if you had a rating of 70% or more, you didn't. And when I moved here, I was completely just throwing off my rocker. So, where are we? Because like you said, in South Carolina and other states that I do know, there are other states that you don't? Or it's drastically reduced? So, North Carolina, I was wondering, because there are a substantial number of veterans that do reside here.
So, thank you for the question. So, this cycle, I've seen at least five bills to, five bill drafts to come through related to the veterans' property taxes. I filed one. And mine really focuses on the percentage of the disability. Even at 10%, you would get a discount. And would go all the way up to 100% and you wouldn't have to have any property taxes. And we are seeing that now. Now, it was a bill that passed the House last week that's gonna look at a study to study, well, I'm not all up for studies and the senate don't like studies. So I'm not sure if any of those bills are gonna move. I know mine, it may move, I can't say. But I know a study did pass in the House and it may go to the senate. And, but crossover, and let me talk a little bit about that because y'all probably don't understand the process of what happens in Raleigh. So what happens in Raleigh, when we go back in session, and we in long session right now, is we get 10 tokens. And those 10 tokens are for us to draft 10 bills if we desire to draft 10 bills. We don't get more than 10 to primary, that mean you the first sponsor on the bill. You can be the second and the third and the fourth sponsor on it, how many ever you want to. But all you're gonna get is 10 tokens, so that's 10 pieces of legislation. So right now, the budget has already been done by the senate. The senate done passed their budget. So, the senate's turn to have the budget first was this time. Now the budget's gonna come back to us in another week or two. The governor's already presented his budget as well. What'll happen, once the budget comes back over to us, the senate gonna send their budget back over to us and we not gonna be happy with their budget, I'm gonna tell you that. That's normal, we not gonna like everything that they got in there. And then we gonna look at it and we gonna say, "Well, what can get resolved? What can we agree on and what can we not agree on?" And then, they gonna set up several people that call conferees. And there are several legislators that'll go in the room with the senate conferees and they gonna fight back and forth. "We want this and we want that." That's what they gonna do, they gonna act, just like little children, you know, who gets their lollipop. Right? And whoever gets satisfied first is gonna, they gonna, they gonna cave in. And then it's done. Crossover is when every bill that comes out of each chamber goes over to the other chamber. Like my bills that passed last week, they going over to the other chamber. And they gonna look at them and they gonna say, "Well, yeah, well, no." And then, but still, that don't mean it's over. When it's over is when the budget is done. That's when it's over. Because some of the stuff that I asked for may not get in separately, but it may go in the budget. So that's why sometimes you may have to vote for things that, you know, you sponsored it, why you gonna vote against yourself? And you have to vote for some other things because you're not gonna get everything you want. You gonna have to take some things that you don't wanna take. Y'all understand? So it's a give and take. Carla ain't gonna get all she want. Jeff over there ain't gonna get all he want. You know that school money I was talking about, that $9 million? When I got ready to get that $9 million, I had already put the bill out, right, to get that $9 million? But I had to go to the Chair of Appropriations three and four times and say, "You gonna fight for my money? You gonna fight for my lunch debt?" Yeah. But still, I wasn't believing it, right? I still went back again, "You sure? You sure?" And that's what you gotta do. But the number one thing you need to do when you get to Raleigh is you establish some relationships with people that don't look like you and don't talk like you and don't sound like you. And it's better to be in the room than to be on the plate. So a lot of times, I may be on a committee that you, that you say, "Oh, Lord, what's she doing on there?" Because I'm on oversight and they gonna have a dose committee and they gonna want me on it. And I'm like, "Oh, I don't know if I wanna do that." Well, you know, that's because the perception of the people is already impacted by what's going on at the federal level. I'm not at the federal level. I'm here. And that's why it's so important to try to understand, know your legislator. Know your senator. And I'm gonna tell you one last thing. And I want y'all to go out and talk about it. If your legislator coming to Raleigh and ain't bringing no resources home, you need to dial their phone number. Because every, just because the party in charge have all the power, you must learn how to navigate, negotiate in the space that you occupy at the time. So that you can bring something home to your people. See, y'all, the YMCA, them kids up there, my people. Lifespan, them people are my people. Yeah. They my kids, they my children, they my people. We should be bringing resources home to our community. We should be bringing resources home to our community. And that is the most important thing you can do down there. It ain't about making that 13,900 a year. It ain't for $13,900. That's all it is. That's all it is. And it ain't about having no title because it don't mean no much, and you don't get all the perks that they used to get. It's about doing the hard work. Saying no is easy. Saying no is easy. You got to get to a yes some kind of way.
Okay. How do, how can people reach their legislator? When the mailbox is full and the emails, you can't get any more emails done, and this one is not answered. I know there's a back door to go through, but I need to hear it from someone else.
So it's not really a back door. It's really not. We get hundreds of emails every day. And what my legislative system and my research assistant do is they go through all those emails. I can't look at all them emails, and they're gonna prioritize them for me. And then I'm gonna look at the ones that's red flagged, and then I'm gonna decide on how to handle it or manage it. It depends, it depends too. You can call and leave a message, but most of the time, I'm not in the office. I'm in the meeting somewhere, I'm trying to get back home or something. But if you know your legislator, call him on that home number. Leave a message. I get calls at home, sometimes they ain't nice calls. Yeah. Just keep calling, don't ever stop calling. Yeah, don't ever stop calling. Keep calling until somebody call you back. I don't care how many times it take, you keep calling till you get an answer. Because they got people, they got more people in their offices than I got in mine. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, they do. Tillis has two district offices. There's one out there in university somewhere, and then it used to be one up there in Hottlesville. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, don't ever stop calling. Keep calling, write a letter too. Yes, sir.
A question on changing the concealed weapons law. I guess they're gonna get rid of that, and I guess at age 19, you can purchase a handgun? Or I might have the age wrong.
It's gonna be 18.
18.
It's gonna be 18. And that's another thing, we need to secure our weapons because most suicides are done with firearms. If you have a weapon, please secure it. And more of them are out here, and more of them will be out here. And you referencing the concealed carry. If that statute passes, 18-year-olds on up is gonna be able to conceal carry. And we already got the Wild Wild West, but we're not going to be able to stop it. Now, the, we may be able to, the governor may veto it, but I'm not sure if we'll be able to sustain it, to be able to hold it. So it, that's gonna be a hard one. That's gonna be the hardest thing that happens is that concealed carry for us because our crime rates are so significantly high in the urban area, and most of them are committed by young adults. Not, I'm talking about 14, 15, 16 homicide. Homicide is the second-leading cause of death of 15 to 19-year-olds. So that, you know, them getting their hand on a gun just ain't a good thing for the next generation or the current one. The crime, huh, is something. The last thing I'm gonna tell y'all, because we getting close. I want to talk about this facility called the Kate Blessing Foundation. The Kate Blessing Foundation is setting up a facility here in Mecklenburg County that would be the largest adolescent facility in the state of North Carolina. They will have 72 beds. And the reason I'm supporting it is because our adolescents in Mecklenburg County wait longer than any other in the entire state to get a treatment bed. We wait longer. And we don't need our children waiting with the issues that we're having in the state. And my time is almost up. Where you going, Reverend Boy? So we at, we at the final five minutes. And I'm gonna share this last thing while Reverend Boy, Reverend Shipman, Reverend Shipman, you paying attention? I'm gonna share this last thing. I have an agenda that is gonna be very inclusive of what the churches do. African-American, people of color, however you want to say it, ADOS, whatever, that I'm focused on. And that's my commitment to our people, to bring back the resources that we need to support our communities. And so they have my commitment for that. I'm working on that, and I'm working on several other things. But lest we fail, lest we fail. God got this. Charlotte gonna close, God gonna let you do some closing remarks.
Come on, everybody, give it up. Powerful, powerful. Thank you, Representative Cunningham. This is our legislative advocacy representation in action. Bringing it back home, bringing it to us in plain language. There's some people we want to thank tonight before we go. There were some elected officials in the House. Is anybody still here? I saw City Councilwoman Johnson a minute ago. She was here earlier. I want to thank Sergeant Robbins, Ricky Robbins, who's in the back who got security for us tonight. He's with CMPD. Ricky Robbins, remember that name, you'll hear it again. There's, I want to thank Representative Cunningham, who, oh, Pastor Jones. She want to recognize you, Pastor Jones. You must be somebody. She is somebody. She's one of the board members of the faith organization that Representative Cunningham is talking about and is advocating for, called Village Heartbeat, Inc. You all have heard of Village Heartbeat. It's a program that seeks to address mental health needs. And because of her advocacy and the work with Dr. Laws, they were able to get our organization funding to begin addressing the needs of mental health in the community and to be able to provide free services for persons who are uninsured and underinsured. And that program is still in operation, and you are funding through Kelly and some additional dollars, the youth wellness hubs to address black teen suicide. Thank you so much for that. Rockwell and Greenville is, are the churches that are part of that. So I want to have Judge Brown to say a word, and then we'll close us out.
I forgot my sister in here, my brother-in-law in here, my daughter's out there to the door. And I have to thank them so much for being the supportive family that I need. You know, you can't be a hard Rockwell unless you surrounded by some diamonds. And I am truly surrounded by diamonds. I just can't call all the names, I'm gonna stop.
Thank you. Someone said something? Announcement? I announce you. You have an announcement.
Thank you, Judge Brown. Join us for an important discussion on Charlotte Transit Future. Representative Cunningham, are you paying attention? Join us for an important discussion on Charlotte's Transit Future. Sunday, location St. Luke Missionary Baptist Church, 1600 Norris Avenue. Time, doors open at 4:30 PM. I'll see you there. Sponsored by the Black Political Caucus of Charlotte Met. Thank you very much.
It's my, my pleasure to be here and to do a closing prayer. May we bow our heads. Oh, God, our Father, our Creator, you who loves us so much that you died for us, that we may have the right and the opportunity to be your children and to be transformed and made into your image, that we could learn to love one another, to care for one another, to be kind to one another, to be compassionate and to be forgiving, and that we might exercise self-control. Thank you for all of the people, oh, God, who have come out tonight to be part of this town. Thank you for Representative Cunningham and her work. Strengthen her, God. Encourage her, God. Bless her, God. And bless all those who surround her and lift up her arms, oh, God. For she's doing your work, oh, God. Thank you for the pastor boy, Pastor Shipman, and all the preachers and teachers who are participating in this community to help, oh, God, make it better for so many lives, God. Thank you for calling us. Thank you for blessing us, to use us for the work, God. We praise your wonderful name. We ask you to bless each and every family that is represented here. If there's anyone who is sick and need to be healed, God, we ask for healing. We ask for the be lifted up for those who might be depressed and anxious, oh, God. For your word says, don't be anxious. Oh, God, help us to hide your word in our heart so that we can encourage one another. And God, let us be careful and mindful to do all that we could, all that we can, to be like you, to be like Christ. In Jesus's name, amen.